Once the original, once the modification.
Okay, all right. Good evening. Seeing quorum, the chair opens up. The Mashpee Planning Board Meeting of Wednesday, September 6, 2017, Town of Mashpee. We are here at Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I'd like to let everybody know that we're being videographed and recorded. And if you have the opportunity to address the board, please do so at the mic. Introduce yourself, and then state your business. I'd like to invite everybody to stand and join with me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the apartment for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to go over our agenda a little bit, I'm not sure who have a copy of it. We have an --
Copies available if anybody wants.
In the front seat. We're going to do an approval of minutes, then go to a special permit modification, and then under New Business, Presentation from Mashpee Commons. We talk a little bit about Cape Cod Commission Mashpee Mitigation Funds, scheduling a public hearing for our proposed zoning bylaw changes for our October town meeting. Then we do Old Business and Correspondence. So, I ask the board to review the minutes of August 16, 2017. The chair has no comments. I'd accept a motion from a board member to accept as presented.
I'd accept the minutes of August 16 as written.
All in favor?
Aye. And David Corharian abstained.
Um, Dave, okay.
Does David Whedon have to --
No, 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 no. He was there. Rob isn't, wasn't, isn't so. Come on. All set.
Did we lose Rob?
Four. But, no, he hasn't come in.
He was just here.
He was?
Oh, okay.
Did he hear?
Okay, anyways, our next item is a special permit. The applicant is Knockabout Beer Company. Location is 13 Lake Avenue, Mashpee, Accessor's Map, 27 Block 46. The location is 13 Lake Avenue. The request is approval of a special permit modification for architectural and site plan change to Knockabout Beer Company, including modifications to exterior siding and trim, retaining walls, patio, rain gardens, and the chair recognizes the project proponent.
Show me where the mobile mic is. Where is it? Peter Myrna with Knockabout Beer. Hello, everyone. Hello, audience. Thank you for taking the time tonight to meet and to discuss this. Last time, we put in our special permit modification, there was kind of two components. One was about phasing our site work, and the second was about the changes to our architectural design, as well as some changes that came forth from that, as far as stair placement, window placement, and other items that affected our site plan. So, tonight, what I'd like to do is, from my understanding, in our original special permit, Condition 13 allows us the opportunity to present you with a bond when the time comes if we are not able to or are able to move forward with finalizing all of the site work that's currently planned for. I'm working right now on figuring out what exactly we're going to request on that front and what that bond will entail, and we'll work with Charlie, Tom, and whoever else to make sure that we have a bond that is appropriately packaged to meet those requirements. And we'll come back to you guys to present that at a later date before our occupancy permit is given. And tonight, what I'd like to do is to go over the architectural and the slight changes to the site plan and get your approval on that so we can continue to move forward on our siding and other items that are involved with the development of the site as proposed. So, in front of you, I believe Tom provided you with copies of the previous elevations and floor plans, as well as the updated, and then copies of the previous site plan, and then the updated version. We can start with the elevation, since those kind of drive the site plan. And if they're dated, it should start with AR4. Elevations in the front dated 8/17 revised per owner request in the revision box on the cover page. I can walk through each side of the elevation and talk through what the changes have been, and we can compare that, if you'd like, with the previous version. We met with the Design and Site Committees before this, and also with Historic. So, on the front of the building, we've, the left-side windows have been raised compared to the ones that were approved last time. Reasoning for that is those were the bathrooms live, and it felt a little intrusive to have the windows so low into that space. The picture window on the right is the same. The cupola, I'll address that here, is a little bit smaller, less cumbersome, less structural requirements to get that to work up there. We will make sure that it's not internally lit, as discussed last time. If we look at the left-side elevation, we've, the right-side bottom window has also been raised a little bit and a little bit less height on that. Again, that's in the bathroom, and that's the reason for that. On the left-hand side, where the bump-out is, we've added a door. The only access that we had there before was for a roll-up, which you can see on the rear elevation. We wanted the staff and, to have access without having to go through the rear roll-up door to get down to the basement area. So, it was additional access for the staff on that. And then, if we look at the rear elevation, no major changes on this, except for we've added some trim below the window, some trim detail that complement the overall change that we've made on the siding, which was board and batten before. Now, we're going with a traditional cape shingle, which will be natural, which was red before. And the trim will be white. Doors, windows, trim, white, instead of the red. And then, on the right elevation, excuse me, let me stay on the rear. You'll see the stairs have changed direction on the rear. That's impacted the site plan, so we can go over that when we look at the site plan. And then, on the right elevation, we've added the trim below the windows, which was there originally when we purchased the property, and we've added a barn door at the top for an architectural detail. And if we, if you have the updated site plans in front of you, we can go over those. They are dated 9/5, should say revision date. And page three of that is the proposed final plan. See, the stairs have been changed on this, and they've adjusted the decking on the left. And we've actually included a little bump-out in the front where it says lawn area, put fencing around that, just so that we could have natural grass there and still have customers be able to stand there.
Can you say that again? I was turning the page.
Sorry about that. Yep. So, the stairs in the rear, where the utility pad area is, the lawn area in the front, we've included the fence around that, before the fence wasn't included, just so we can have people stand on that grass there. And then, on the left, just showing that deck there, before the grade was up to the door. We've kept the back-out spaces, everything that was requested for the overflow, overflow dry well. The rain garden stayed the same. All those elements, none of those design elements have changed, so.
So, was this a little bit less of a change than the ones we saw the last time we were here, like when we voted not to have?
The public hearing.
Oh, we just discussed potential changes. There was no drawings made, so I'm going to come back when I actually have a final scope of work and performance bond that aligns with that, that everyone that needs to see it has seen it. I'm trying my best right now to do as much of that site work as we can, so try to get as much done and come back to you, say, here's what's left to be done.
Okay. So, does that fenced-in lawn area, does that fence have to be so high?
It has to be. I forget the exact height on it, but there is a height component to it. It will match the same fence that we have along the front as well. So, it'll be continuation of what we had planned already.
Because sometimes, I don't know if it's required in Mashpee, that the height has to be like six feet?
I don't believe it has to be six feet, no.
All right.
No. I just don't think it can be like a foot.
Yeah. No, somebody who's having an alcoholic beverage, some places want it cleaned.
The fencing, yeah, is part of our permitted area for the, when we get our liquor permitting.
Where are you going to put your sign?
So, we have the same sign locations as before.
I don't see it on that.
They are on the, and these are the, yeah, they're on the corner of Lake Avenue 130. We're reusing the existing sign that, there, yep. And there's one at the bottom of the driveway, on the one-way in, that's existing, that we're going to be repairing and replacing and putting our sign up. And then, there's one that's above the entrance of the building, which you can see on the elevations. It's on the front elevation, you can see there's a circular sign, and --
Oh, okay.
So, those, that's an existing sign as well, that we're just replacing and putting our sign in its place.
So, is it going to be lit up?
There'll be downlit.
Downlit, okay, good.
Yes, sir.
And will that be the same for the sign on Route 130?
It'll all be downlit.
Downlit.
Yep. And they're wooden signs.
Have copies of the sign design. It's the same as was originally approved, that's why I didn't bother to put it in your package.
I was scared as well, yeah.
All the same as what you approved.
Since we've been having a lot of problems with signs lately in the town.
Really?
So, Dennis, do you want to start? Do you have any comments?
Nope. I could, I already went for the historical with this.
And so, what did the historical?
They liked it.
They liked it?
Yeah.
They have not taken a vote on it, though, because there was an issue where there had to be a letter sent, and 10 days after that, so they've got a meeting scheduled for next Monday.
Yeah, Monday.
And that's when they'll be allowed to take a vote on it, but as Dennis said, it was generally a favorable reception.
Rob?
I was there. I can vouch for that.
Okay. Any other comment?
David was there, too.
That was a funny meeting.
Yes, it was.
You just had a quorum. Wait a minute.
Yeah, man.
Any other comments? David?
No, I have no comments at this time.
Joe?
No, I was in design review.
Right. How did design review go?
We thought it looked pretty good.
The cranberry thing was the one condition I heard about.
Not this time.
Oh, that's what Mike said.
No conditions?
No conditions.
Okay.
Really?
David?
All set. Looks good.
Tom? Do you have any comments?
No, just said, I prepared a draft decision, and I was told by Mike Mendoza that, it was at the planner view meeting, that the designer view committee had approved it, except that there's a note on it for a cranberry-colored door, and they --
It's a mistype.
It's going to be a white door, so.
Yeah, it's just a carryover.
That's what he told us, that's why we wrote the permit. But the planner view committee reviewed it and the, put two conditions on it. One was to get rid of that cranberry notation, which is just a door, actually. Everything else --
Yeah, everything else. It was just, it was a mistake on my copy-add error.
And the, the other condition suggested by the fire, Deputy Fire Chief, was that there's a, there's a deck in the back that is accessing to the second floor, and it wouldn't, when the stairway was straight on to the door back there, it was fine the way it was in terms of the width, but coming in from the side now, he wanted, and the planner view committee added a condition of their recommendation, that the roof walkway, what's called in the back there, or the top deck, be at least five feet wide.
All right. When more people get down.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll make sure that deck is at least five feet.
You want to be able to get a stretcher up there and be able to maneuver around.
Okay. So, you, do you have a copy of the draft modification number two?
No, I just cranked that up.
Copy for Peter?
Not much that he doesn't know about. Hope I got a copy.
And so, let's see, it's kind of under construction.
Yes.
What's your target date for completing construction?
As soon as we can.
Okay, all right.
Working hard. They're out there every day.
I see them, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, so you want to take us through the modification? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, Charlie, do you have any questions?
Site planning. I'm sorry.
Just one question, and just for the board's information. There are two other small changes to the plan, it looks like, minor things, I don't know that makes any difference. Where the overhead door was in the front, there was a ramp on the old plan, and sort of an access way for a vehicle to get to that ramp. But with the fence in the front and the lawn area now, you can't get out of there. So, I was just wondering about that.
Carry that over.
Then, there's, on the new plan, there is a deck on the north side, which appears to be just a landing for the double doors that are shown in the left elevation. And then, the garden, rain garden area, and the new one on the north side, has been shortened up a little bit, but I don't see that as a significant issue either.
Yeah, the decking I mentioned, I forgot, I didn't realize that they didn't carry that deck, that gate over on the front there, on the lawn.
So, are you still going to need the ramp?
I believe there's a, there's a ramp, let me see. There's already, there's a ramp still drawn there on the, on the front.
It's behind the fence.
Yeah, so the fence, I'm going to need a gate there. I didn't realize that they didn't put the gate back. The ramp still needs to be there from a great, site grading point of view, so we're going to need a gate there, because we're going to have to use that for loading materials in and out, so. But I believe, let me see here.
Other than that, maybe fine.
Do you need that, would you like that in the modification?
It does say on here, proposed fence with access gate on the right-hand side. I don't think it just shows where the gate is on the notes.
Okay. It does say, it's labeled with an access gate, so that's fine.
Okay. Want to take us through the modification, too?
Okay. Well, the first page is just the usual boilerplate, proposal, the dates, action, you have the jurisdiction you're operating on a June 15, 2016 zoning, because that's when you approved the special permit. This thing was filed, this modification was filed August 17. On your August 16 meeting, you voted that a public hearing would not be required, based on your view of the plans. September 5th, now here's where I may have been misled by Mike Mendoza, but the project plans were reviewed and recommended for approval by the designer view committee, conditioned on correcting the architectural plans to reflect all trim and flashing, as well as the front door be labeled, it has to be painted white. Doesn't sound like the rest of that happened after the recommended approval, so I might need to.
I think you're right on that.
Yeah, I think you are correct.
Yeah.
Oh.
The door should be painted white.
It's going to be white, so.
Okay, so it's in there.
Yeah, it was just a miss, it was a copy error on the designer.
All right.
Didn't carry it over. He changed the.
On the same date, the proposed plans were reviewed and recommended for approval by the planner view committee, with the same condition that trim and door be white, along with a second condition suggested by the fire department, represented that the deck, roof walkway is labeled on the plan, accessing the second floor be increased at least five feet in width. August 30, plans reviewed by Mashpee Historic District Commission, which continued its meeting until September 11, ran amendment to the certificate of appropriateness. And then, the next paragraph is about what you're going to do tonight. It presumes that you will approve the project unanimously, but obviously, that's always subject to change. And then, the findings are basically very typical, the size of the property, the zoning district.
Look at finding.
The property has been changed since the original. Four is the same, five. The, number five, the current proposed modifications, according to the conservation agent, are outside the commission's jurisdiction, so it didn't need any further con con action.
Number six.
Six, design and planner view committees, September 5.
Ooh, gee.
Twenty, twenty, yep, okay. Couple of little ones in here. Stinking ahead. I wonder if I'll be alive then.
Tom, one thing I see on here is number two.
That's number two.
On the findings, are we on the findings section?
Yes.
The property owner has been updated. It was updated on the last special permit modification. The first special permit was granted before we'd purchased it, and the modification was granted after we had purchased it, and so, the property's currently owned by Lake Avenue Holdings, which is our company, and we are, okay.
But it says, number three.
Oh, the, sorry.
It does say to Lake Avenue, okay.
Yeah, the original special permit was different ownership.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, sorry. Apologize.
And August 30, regarding the Historic District Commission, continues September 11. And then, number eight, based on the foregoing findings, the planning board hereby further finds that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the findings that you have to make under the zoning bylaw to approve a special permit.
Which is that it's consistent with applicable state and town regulations, statutes, bylaws.
Goes on and on, yep.
Okay.
Guiding conditions, construction of projects should be done only in accordance with the following modified plans hereby approved by the planning board. A three-sheet site plan set entitled Site Development Plan Set for Knockabout Beer Company LLC, number 13, Lake Avenue, Mashpee, Massachusetts, dated April 13, as revised September 5, 2017 by Bracken Engineering. That's the set you have there. Proposed building is depicted on a four-sheet plan set entitled New Edition Remodeling for Knockabout Beer Company, 13 Lake Avenue, Mashpee, Mass, revised date August 7, 2017 by Jam Petro Architects. Again, that's the set you have in front of you. Approval of this special permit modifications, condition on conformance with the terms of any amended certificate of appropriateness approved by the Mashpee Historic District Commission. Condition three, all trim and flashing, as well as the front door should be white. In addition, the deck, parentheses, roof walkway, close parentheses, accessing the second floor will to be increased to at least five feet in width. The architectural plan shall be corrected to reflect said changes with three sets of the revised plan, 24 by 36 inches, along with a PDF of said plans to be filed with the town plan, and within 14 days of this decision.
That's good?
Yes.
I think it's doable. Now, at the time I did this, I didn't realize that there were more changes. Actually, all the changes to the site plan are on the site plan, so I guess we're all set there. We don't need too many further changes.
Correct.
Right. Okay, so nothing, nothing needed. Condition placed in the original special permit remain in effect, except as modified by this decision. All conditions run with the land, binding on the applicant's successor's entitlement. No building occupancy permits may be issued while there exists any substantial violation of the conditions of the special permit as modified by this decision unless the board by a favorable of the four members at a regular meeting should allow such issuance. Seventh, final, the applicant shall provide the board and the Mashpee building inspector with copies of the special permit modification as recorded in the Barnes-Pleton Register of Deeds, shown the book and page at which is recorded, or its recordation number. This modification decision shall not take effect. No work may be commenced as allowed by this modification until this decision has been so recorded. And this not being a public hearing process, no notice to butters and the rest, and we actually have the letters back from the butters saying they agree to that, there's no 20-day appeal period. So, once this gets, or assuming it gets approved and signed by the board tonight, file it with the clerk in the morning, and then they can take it to record it.
We don't have to talk about the on-point property management quote until we --
Well, that's something Peter gave me today.
I'm working on that. We'll come back to that.
If there is a bond required for that Condition 13 requirement, that I go out and inspect everything and make sure it's all there, as far as landscaping and the site features go, we'll come back at a later date.
Okay.
This wants to deal just with the designs, the plans.
Trying to be able to keep building.
Okay.
That's something else.
We'll come back as we figure out. My goal is to do as much as we can.
As soon as he wants to move in.
Right. Right now, so.
All right, so I have no other comments?
Nope, I don't.
I'd accept a motion to approve this special permit.
About the public, no.
If there's anybody from the public that would like to, it's not officially a public hearing, but if there's any bear masters out there that would like. But, yeah, so it's right down here on Lake Avenue, it's where the old flume was. Peter, you've purchased the property and is making a microbrewery, and I think with respect to, you know, the economic development plans for the town, it's, it's great.
Very lucky to be here.
Yeah. We are lucky that you're here. That's great. So, seeing no comments, I would accept a motion from.
Make a motion to accept this, the modification to a special permit for Knockabout Beer Company LLC.
Modification number two, dated September 2, 2017. My first, second, any discussion?
Just, I will make that correction to the date in number six.
Number six. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the modification is number six?
No, there's a.
Number six is the one where you caught that I put 2027.
There's a date, there's a typo.
Okay.
It's a little premature, so.
So, I don't have my notary stamp with me.
Oh, does anybody here know to read?
So, is there anybody that can come into Town Hall tomorrow and sign it?
Uh, yeah.
Can you?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that'll give me a chance to make the correction, and then I'll let Dennis know it's ready to go.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, he's going to make them all new, because. All right, so our, we go to new business, and our first order under new business is Mashpee Commons. We're going to have a presentation and discussion on revised master plan zoning and planning process. So, the chair recognizes the project proponent. Would it be helpful if we dim the lights in the front?
Madam Chair, I'm going to make an introductory presentation, and then Russ is going to do a series of slides as part of his explanation, so. Good evening. I'm Buff Chase. I know some of you, not all of you.
Hi, Buff.
Yes, I know. Charlie, I know.
So, why don't we go around and introduce ourselves?
Okay.
So, you know Jen Clifford. She's our board secretary.
Robert? Yeah. Hi, Robert.
Rob Hanson.
Hi, Rob.
David Whedon.
David.
Dennis.
Dennis, we know.
Joe Cummings.
Hi, Joe. Nice to meet you.
Gary Wagan.
Dave Corharian.
Hi, Dave.
Charlie Rolley.
Charlie Rolley, and Tom Badolo.
Do you know him? And I do want to point out that David Whedon is also a member of the Cape Cod Commission.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yeah. So, good evening, everyone, and members of you that are here from the community, and see some very familiar faces. So, as I just mentioned to the Madam Chair, is that our thought tonight was to, for me to start out with some remarks, followed by Russ, who is going to do a slide presentation, but really, I have a big chunk of time for the question-and-answer period, so we can get a sense of what, what you as a board want, and also in your representation of the community, to try and hear. So, there may be some, as was just stated, there may be some expectation of us rolling out a formal plan tonight. I think that was reported in the newspaper. But actually, we plan tonight to introduce a proposal in which the Mashpee Common team joins with you, and this is my team here, Russell Preston, Tony Simon, Tiger Brown, Tom Ferrante, Mary Durr back there, and John Connell makes up the team that is working on the, on the future plans for the Mashpee Commons, as well as the current operations. I think you're familiar with Tom, because he usually is the person presenting to you. So, we're going to, we are, our plan tonight is to introduce a proposal in which our team joins with you and others in the community to enter into a process which will produce a development, which in itself, the process will produce a development plan for the next phases of Mashpee Commons, and that reflect the desires of the community, the economic reality of the, of the current times, and in simple terms, allow us to collectively work together to build on the successes of Mashpee Commons. Recalling this -- work together to build on the successes of Mashpee Commons, recalling this process Mashpee Commons by design. As many of you know, the Mashpee Commons property has been in my family for many years, and we share a deep commitment to building a vibrant, mixed-use neighborhood at Mashpee Commons. I've watched my children and family grow up on the Cape, and I've always felt a strong sense of responsibility for making sure the region succeeds in a way that preserves and enhances the lifestyle and the environment that we cherish. It is with that sentiment that we have made a priority to incorporate community input and the Cape Cod vernacular in what we have built so far. So we've tried to build a neighborhood that adds community benefits and stands as a place that we can take pride in. We hope this board shares our opinion that we've had some real successes in achieving these goals over the past thirty years. Mashpee Commons serves as a hub for more than a hundred small businesses, and a workplace for over a thousand employees. In addition, we are happy to have ninety residents living in sixty-seven apartments. They call Mashpee Commons home. We serve as the host for the annual Christmas and Halloween parades, farmers' markets, the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce, and very, various other community events throughout the year. We're the single largest taxpayer in the town, and one of the largest sources of economic activity in the region, and we hope to continue to improve the Commons in both small and large ways. A recent addition of the community bandstand is an example of one that we've already added, and hope we add to the cultural life here in Mashpee. We're proud of all we've done to serve the community, but the reality is we stand at a crossroads in being able to continue the type of neighborhood building we've been working on for the last thirty years. However, the current zoning within the Commons does not provide the direction or the flexibility for the type of neighborhood we've been building, and that Mashpee residents have come to know and love. This might come as a surprise to many, but if, for example, we wanted to construct a big-box store on the Jobbs Wedding Road, and the Jobbs Fishing Road, current zoning would, would allow for that. On the other hand, current zoning laws do not allow us to continue the type of mixed-use residential and retail buildings that have just been completed along Market Street. I recently attended the One Cape Summit hosted by the Cape Cod Commission with many of you. The Cape Cod Commission reinforced what we at Mashpee Commons have already seen, there is, that there is an increased demand for the type of housing that helps retain our young people on the Cape, that provides affordable opportunities for families, and provides enjoyable downsizing opportunities for our senior, senior population. There are many complex issues we face every day on the Cape, but we know that these issues can be resolved when the community comes together to find solutions. It has been more than thirty years since we transformed the New Seabury Shopping Center into Mashpee Commons. Our experience over that time has given us many of the ideas we think the people of Mashpee would, would want to see, but we've also learned that the best ideas come from when we open the planning process to the community for input and engagement. So tonight, we're asking the Mashpee community to come together to help us design the future of Mashpee Commons. We're proposing a series of public forums and meetings that we hope will result in a clear, long-term vision for the expansion of Mashpee Commons, as well as a strategy for how to implement that vision. We know this will be, will likely require new zoning. We will want to engage with you all in the design of Mashpee Commons to create more opportunities for economic development, but we want to hear your ideas. We think there should be more public parks for people to visit and play, we want to hear your ideas around that. Do you think there should be more residential opportunities to reflect the growing need of workforce housing on the Cape? We want to hear it all, and we hope that Mashpee residents and stakeholders join with us to, to come up with these solutions as best we can. And at the end, we want to work with the town to incorporate the best ideas into a plan that will continue to make Mashpee Commons a community asset for generations to come. So again, thank you for the opportunity to present that statement tonight. I'm gonna turn over it now, over to Russ Preston, to provide a presentation with some more details on the process that we're envisioning, but we're open to any suggestions you might have to make it a better process. And Russ, I'd just, to introduce you, worked for us at Mashpee Commons for about eight years, and then he went off and started his own planning firm, has done a lot of work in, in and around northern New England. His company is, is a planning company, and also has worked extensively in Somerville, Massachusetts, so, so he, he's had experiences, learning experience here, so thank you very much for the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Madam Chair, Board, thank you for having us this evening. Could we dim the lights maybe a little?
Be mad of just shutting them off behind you there.
Yeah, hopefully the audience and everyone get a better sense of the slides.
Thanks, Jim.
That should work, right?
That's great.
Well, I don't think we need to put them in the dark, but...
That's okay. So to build on Buff's remarks, the, the team has been working on this for a long time, and this comes out of a design movement called New Urbanism, and this philosophy around building compact, walkable neighborhoods, and, you know, we still, we still share those principles, and Mashpee Commons actually, you know, historically now recognizes one of those early, early visionary projects around, around how you do new urbanism in a sensitive way. And what we find is that, at the Commons, we spend a lot of time talking about the design of the buildings, and the, and the architecture, and the tenants that come into those buildings, even the fountains that we build in our squares, but what, what really results from that, if we do it properly, is the public life of, of the streets and the squares in the Commons. And, you know, if you've been there at all this summer, you can really see an amazing, vibrant place that people really like to come and enjoy. And as we've talked about this over the last months, and many discussions within the team, it's how do we continue to shape those spaces so folks can come and, and enjoy the neighborhood just for itself, and not necessarily be shopping or dining, but really just enjoy it as a place? So if the members of the board haven't been out to the Commons recently, please try and stop by and check out the new buildings, sort of coming up Market Street here. That was the, those are the beginnings of our forty-B project, master plan was, was granted under almost ten years ago now. That project has been a learning experience for all of us, and it's, it's resulted in, in the lesson that the forty-B mechanism is, is not feasible. So as you see, we've built three buildings and bits of the infrastructure going up Market Street, but we really need to revisit how we're implementing the project. And what we've found is there's a number of challenges with the existing zoning as well, and that, we need to look at what's on the ground now today, is that the vision that we all still share, and is there a way by design that we can continue to transform that shopping center, and that, you know, what is essentially reflected in the still commercial zoning, into a, into a great mixed-use neighborhood? And by design, look for an implementation path forward with, with new zoning to do so. So, these are, these are four big questions that, that we've been really stumped on over the last period of planning here, and, and wanted to come forward and talk to you tonight about these, and hopefully these will help orient the process that I'm gonna present to you tonight, that we'd like to suggest we go through together. So just to orient everyone, those three buildings I just showed you are right here, this is Market Street, coming up the hill, here, so everyone doesn't turn their head over on this side, and, and this is the core of the Commons. But what you see here is the, is the extent of, of the master plan area, everything from the trout pond to the east over here, and this is the wastewater treatment plant, just to orient folks. But really, we want to talk about the long-term vision for the master plan, and, and come to some consensus about what the, the goals and objectives are through this process, and then look at implementations, strategies for doing that, both zoning, infrastructure, and a number of other issues around how we build out this neighborhood. So this is, you know, the first question here is, it's a wonderful neighborhood, and how do we continue building that together? So for us, these, you know, looking at these buildings is great, but what else does the Common need to provide for the community at a, at a whole? And we think it's a lot about the public life and the spaces in between the buildings. So if you see here today, this is the beginning of Jobbs Fishing Green here, at the end of Market Street, and, you know, we've begun to do some sketches around what that might be, and, and what's the life of that place, and we want to know, what does the larger community want, and, and how do we figure out how to make that happen? And looking further afield, you know, other parks and squares and green spaces, how do we build those together so that they reflect the community's values and vision for its future? You know, everything from, you know, safe, walkable places for children, and, and, you know, community gardens, but what else can we add to, to the Commons to make it a, a more vibrant place? And we look back at history a lot, and, and look at the neighborhoods in Cape Cod, and this is, you know, naturally, these places were made by many people, in many hands, so how do we do that going forward? And we think a big, you know, a big part of, of, of an idea here is, how do we craft place-based zoning that, that really reflects that vision by design? And there's a number, number of places we've looked at around, around the region and nationally for how to do that, but we need to talk about that more with you. The second big question is, you know, the environmental health of the region, you know, there's a, the idea that the waterways is facing a, a large pollution crisis, and we think, you know, through discussions with the Cape Cod Commission, and, and looking at the, the, the new regional policy plan, understanding how this idea of a compact, walkable neighborhood that happens to be connected to good wastewater treatment can be a solution for that larger regional watershed, waterway issue. And if you look at the compact, the historic patterns of settlement, it's, it reflects that, those lessons, that tradition, and what we find is that, you look nationally and talking to colleagues around the country, that there are many other benefits to building, you know, these walkable places, and the Sierra Club has actually made it one of their primary missions now to help with many environmental solutions. But we think there's also benefits, you know, the idea of getting, you know, more walking, more biking, more active lifestyle, you know, how do we look at food security and building, you know, a local food hub around food and, and culture? And then also, how do we connect this place to the larger greenway system throughout Mashpee and, and the region? So this brings us to our third question, is the housing in Mashpee, you know, we want to deliver that in a variety of different scales and different shapes, and you can see here in this first phase of the, of the Jobbs neighborhood, it's a variety of apartment buildings, you know, some above retail, some, some not, but what we'd like to do is build out a neighborhood that has a spectrum of buildings, small to large, multifamily to single-family, townhouses, both for sale and rental, so that we can really fill out the full spectrum of housing types, and provide for all lifestyles and all economic levels. So, you know, Buff mentioned the One Cape Conference, which we all found really educational, and something that was interesting that came out of that, that meeting was this slide about, you know, the, the state of the housing stock on the Cape, and we think this really speaks to that idea of, of filling out the full spectrum of housing in a, in a, in a walkable neighborhood. So for us, the, the final big question is, how do we continue to grow the local economy and, and provide an economic vibrancy to the town? And we look at, you know, some of the sort of institutions in Mashpee Commons that have been there for decades, and, and we want to continue to, to provide high-quality spaces for those businesses to, to thrive. And I think it's not just with retail, but retail, restaurants, offices, and other economic operations and businesses, so that as the, the landscape of commerce changes, we can be flexible to provide the right spaces. And if you look at historic main streets and sort of, you know, small towns throughout New England, those, that character and that sense of place, it provides a lot of opportunity for, for a variety of businesses, both office, retail, and such. And that goes back to this idea of placemaking for us, is how do we promote civic life that brings together people for a variety of reasons, and then results in, in high-quality environments that businesses can thrive, both big and small? And that, you know, the recent opening of L.L. Bean is a testament to how the place actually can, can support a variety of, of operations, and, as well as the small, you know, the little addition of a bandstand, and how we can support the culture and the arts even more. So for us, the, the, the big question for us is process, you know, that's our fifth question tonight, is how can we together bring the community and, and the town leadership together to, to talk about the future of Mashpee Commons? And we've, we've put, you know, forward tonight a four-step, sort of four big goals here, is how do we coordinate everyone, make sure that all the folks who need to be involved are involved? How do we engage those folks in a, in a visioning activity where we can actually have meaningful dialogue around the future of the Commons? And then can we design solutions to those, those visions? And then what's the right way to implement that? So we actually can create the plan together. So, our firm and our colleagues have done this in, in other places, in similar processes, but we want to talk with you tonight about is this, what's the right way to do this here in Mashpee, with Mashpee Commons? And the first is how do we coordinate ourselves, and we actually, what's, you know, for lack of a better phrase, plan the planning, it's very meta. And the second is how do we engage each other? Where's the right places to hold these events? How do we have a, you know, how do we have a fun discussion around thinking big and what's, what's right for the Commons and the town? And this is some work we did in Newcastle, up in Maine, for a new comprehensive plan for them. And then, also, what are other places doing? And we'd like to start the, this process this fall with a series of public forums, and, and really dive into some of these big questions in more detail, and learn from people who've been doing this in other places. And then once, you know, we sort of distill down that vision, let's design it together in a multi-day design event, with open studios and, and stakeholder meetings about real issues, so that we can in real time really see if, if, if these design solutions are beginning to make sense. And the, you know, some of these photos are from other efforts we've done at our company, but we think, you know, this, this, this process is flexible, and this, this charrette, this multi-day meeting, really needs to be tailored towards the issues that we unearth over, over the course of the next few months together. And then the idea being that we can actually get real-time feedback with the community in, in a series of days. And for us, it's about making it fun, you know, how can we actually, you know, look to the future and be excited about it? And then put in place plans that make sense, and so we've oftentimes tried to actually implement very quickly and inexpensively some of the ideas that come out of these, these processes, and this is one where we closed an intersection to test out an idea. So I think, you know, really, you know, engaging in some of these real-time solutions and doing it quickly. This ends with an idea of what the, the long-term vision for Mashpee Commons would be, and then we, we would go into, you know, really getting into how do we implement this, and a variety of outcomes, such as new zoning, a vision plan for Mashpee Commons, and then refine that together over the course of the next spring. So this is the process kind of summarized onto one slide, and we'd really like to talk with you tonight about, you know, is this the right thing to move forward with together, and how can we improve this so that we can really, you know, look to Mashpee Commons by design together? So thank you. I think we'll take questions, we have the whole team here.
Okay.
All right, I have a couple of questions.
So, so why don't I go through a little bit of procedure, right?
All right.
So I think I'm gonna start with the board members.
Yeah.
And the, our planning professionals, then open it up to the public?
Yep.
Does that sound okay? And then we'll come, probably come back to the board members. So, I'm sorry, so Dennis, go ahead.
So, your, your, one of your main things is the zoning changes, before this, before anything can happen, we really have to look at the zone, and that's there, see what type of changes that you want on the zoning.
Dennis, and please interrupt me, because he knows more about this process than I do, but I would think it might be the other way around. I would think more, we would, we would, we'd have a series of meetings, probably more meetings than you'd want, but just try and glean from the community what they want, then see whether the existing zoning would allow for that.
Okay, I get it, yeah.
And if it does, then that's fine, if it doesn't, then we would, would suggest changes to the zoning to, to be able to implement the vision.
All right, my other question is... My other question is, you talk about children and stuff. So I don't know, if you're getting out of the 40B, like my, say my daughter, she has two, three kids, how do they, if they want to buy in Mashpee Commons, is it going to be affordable for them or is your affordability like $500,000 and the rest of the houses are a million? I mean, I don't know.
So far, our only, the only efforts that we've done so far have been rental housing.
That's not a bad thing, though. We need.
Yeah. And, and that slide that, that Russ showed about the, so much of the housing on the Cape has been a build of one kind. It was a single-family, one detached housing. We believe that in Mashpee Commons, we could, probably the majority of the housing we built will be other types, will be multifamily, will be apartments, will be for rent, some in, some for sale.
Well, that makes a neighborhood, though, when you have children and older people and younger people all living together, you know.
Actually, we're looking for a childcare operator right now because that is something we want to focus on.
All right. Another question that's been bothering me.
Yeah.
Last year, a couple of years ago, the state gave money to, to build that, the road.
Road, yes.
But that was because we thought we were going to get a 40B.
Well.
Now, how did, do we have to pay the state back or?
That's a good question.
I don't want the town to get stuck.
No, no, exactly. And, and John, my colleague, John, has been the interface with the Mash, Mass Housing on that. So he's, he says, we, we don't think we have to do that, that they're happy with what we did.
All right.
But we're hoping to build at least one more building on, under the 40B program because we want to show you that, that we're trying to, to operate in good faith.
Yep.
But the fact is, is that, that it isn't a good use of, we, we just can't make those kinds of buildings and, and.
I don't think.
Make them work financially. So, and that's one of the constraints. The financial constraints are real, and so that's one of the things. We have to find out what the community wants and then overlay on that the economic realities of what we actually can build because there's infrastructure costs that are.
Right.
That are large as well.
All right. My last question, are you going to keep control of this? Are you going to sell off individual properties to like, say I have a company that wants to build apartment house?
Right.
Are you going to do that?
Well, that's the, that's the benefit of, probably, it's likely that we'll use something called form-based zoning. And a form-based zoning.
That's right.
More or less comes up with the type of building that's going to exist on a lot, the, the height and the width and the massing of it. It will also be subject to an architectural review code, so that will, but with those two things in place, we could in fact sell a block of land to, to another developer and then they could build out. It wouldn't have to be reliant on us to do it, others could do it.
But we still have to do your block form, you know, architect and stuff.
Well, I'm sure that most of those things are, are.
I'm scared.
There are loud variances if the variances are better than what the plan is, you know. I mean, in other words, there would be.
Well, yeah, modification, we could say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I don't want, you know, you have a master plan and all of a sudden you start selling off pieces and every company comes in, they might have changed everything.
Right.
You know, I want to keep it all the same, you know, even though you're selling off, I'm hoping, we can work that out, I suppose.
Yeah, what's important to us is the overall vision and how that happens. So choreographing, like the building tradition that Mashpee Commons has as a company, you know, commitment to design and to traditional, you know, New England architecture, all the things that make that, that environment down there important and special, how do you put that into a series of regulatory documents and then, and a process for reviewing those when projects go on? We want to make sure that's, that's very sound and good. So a form-based code is how, how other developers.
Okay.
And been able to sell a block to another developer or a lot to, to, you know, commercial, you know, enterprise that wants to build one building. So that, you know.
Actually, that's a, if I could answer another question based on what he said, is that we think that what's missing in the development possibilities these days is what I call small increment development, which is the ability, I mean, towns were built by, mostly by builders, right? They knew some architecture, they got plan books and then they build a house or they build another house, they build another, and that's the way the towns that we love were built. But today, because of the complexity of doing building and financing and all those kinds of things, it's mostly the bigger companies that are, are doing the development. We believe that with a form-based zone in place, that you could actually sell a lot or two lots to builders in town that could then build according to the plans that we've all agreed to. And that, and so there'd be many more hands in the making of this community than just.
Yeah, you get a little different tweaks, like this developer does something a little different that makes the neighborhood, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds a good idea, okay. All right, that's all the questions I have, Mary.
Is there another member of the board that would like to go next?
My thing would be, it's kind of building on what you were talking about, recreation and bringing other people in and having people use the commons for other reasons other than just to go shopping.
Exactly.
I know the, the, the board here, we've been sort of kicking around plans for extended greenways and things. I know we've had some conversations with you, but we would really like to kind of work with you very closely about expanding that. We've got a lot of ideas about creating a system that would be a draw for people from all over the place to come and spend time in the commons and have the synergy between the recreation and the commercial aspect of it. And we've done some personal research into that and familiar with several places where that's worked really, really well and increased use and value in the properties around it. So anyway, so when at appropriate time, we'd like to, to really have a, a good conversation with you about how that might come together.
That's great. Yeah, absolutely.
So I don't, I don't know if you're, you're familiar with our greenway plan.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
And we have pamphlets up here after we finish this, if people want to grab one. We do have a small pamphlet that explains David's greenway concept and how it would be a merging of ecotourism and open space preservation and economic development, basically, and that whole area. Anything else?
That's it for now.
Joe?
I just want to say one more thing. I like the way the development's coming out, those new buildings, they really look nice.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Really nice, you know, they're going up to the church.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, a neighborhood now, seems, you know.
Thank you, Dennis.
David?
I'm, I'm concerned with the overall scale of the development, just because, you know, the Mashpee as a community has changed, the small-town appeal has changed drastically in a rapid amount of time. And just in my lifetime, I know other tribal elders that have lived probably twice as long as I've been on the planet, have seen even more significant change in the area. And, you know, it's lost its hometown, its small-town feel and, you know, when, when is enough enough? A lot of the stores and stuff that are in the Mashpee Commons now, they don't typically serve a purpose. I, you know, I, I don't shop at too many, I go, I patronize the restaurants and stuff like that, but a lot of the other stuff, it's, it's kind of out of my pocketbook for, as far as shopping. So it's not, it's not catered to the locals here in Mashpee that have been here for years, for generations. So, you know, I'm kind of wondering, back on Dennis's issue was, you know, what, what type of demographic are you looking at to purchase houses in here? You know, the, the, the real estate's going to be, you know, it's a, it's a internalized community where everything's accessible, you know, your demographic, I'm, I'm not sure what price ranges lots are going to go for or houses are going to go for. I imagine it'll be, follow suit with, you know, it's not, it's not for the locals of the town. You're bringing in influx of people that want that lifestyle and, you know, it's not, it's not really representative of hard-working, blue-collar people here in Mashpee. That would be a concern. Another concern is, you know, the traffic, the volume of traffic that we deal with in the summertime with the influx of tourists, you know, it takes 10 minutes to get across town in the wintertime and then in the summertime, it takes a half hour to get across the town. And, you know, how, how do you plan to address that? If you build out this development to full capacity and change zoning bylaws so that you can, you know, build even more in a denser pattern, you know, that's going to, you're going to, you're going to impact the travel quite a bit, very significantly with all that additional traffic. That, that's a concern of mine as well.
Would you like me to address some of that? So I totally understand your concerns, or I think I understand them. And the, the, the process that we're talking about is to try and literally find solutions for the problems that you're bringing up, like affordability was one of them, workplaces for local people is another, goods being sold in Mashpee Commons that are, are of interest to, to local people, those types of things. Those are all, those are all goals that could be part of our, of our design plan. And you could, you could keep an eye on making sure that we're coming up with some solutions to those in this process. We're not trying to exclude anyone. The, you know, if you build a new building today, there's the reality of what that building costs and then there's a reality of what kind of rent needs to, to be gained in order to get the loan from the bank in order to build the building in the first place. So, but we can discuss those kind of things and we can show you the, you know, it depends how deep you want to go into the financial realities of it all. The traffic is, is a big problem. This type of compact development tends to mean that people use their car less. And in fact, if a family has two or three cars, oftentimes they can get by with one. As you know, transit also is in, comes to Mashpee Commons and different bus lines and stuff. And we're hoping by the whole Cape Cod Commission's approach to creating more compact development centers, that the transit on the Cape will improve. But traffic is bad in the summer in every town and we just believe that if there are more opportunities to work, live and play in Mashpee, then that you're, being tied to a car will be less of a reality and you can do more stuff in town. And as Russell said in some of his slides, even bike, bike becomes a reality. So we have, we have some traffic planning that we've done, which shows altering the, the rotary, shows a bypass of Route 28. There are all kinds of solutions that we can collectively come up with in working with the Cape Cod Commission and, and the state frankly, to improve these things. But, you know, I mean, I guess all I can say is, is that we would make a, a good effort to, to not only solve the problems, but engage your ideas in, in the solutions.
And one other question that comes to mind is, you know, what's, what's the median income of an employee that works within the Mashpee Commons? Are they able to buy the houses that you plan on building? Like one of the workers that works at these places?
Well, as I, as I mentioned, we, we don't have any for-sale housing in Mashpee Commons currently. We only have 67 units of housing and, and there are many people that work there that also live there. And we have this wonderful mix of, of, of young people. We have two or three residents in their 90s who live there independently. So it's a great mixture of ages and incomes and, and I think we can just expand on that. So it may not be the place for everybody in town to live, but I think there are a bunch of people that, that, that would find it attractive. And, you know, as, as Russell's slide stated, in most towns on the Cape, 70 to 80% of the existing housing are, are separate, single-family for-sale houses that are separate. We're really talking about focusing on the, the, you know, the part that's underserved, which is apartments and small houses and that type of thing. And whether they're for rent or for sale, I think really depends on what the market has. Right now, there seem to be a lot of people interested in for rent and the Cape Cod Commission's data also points to that. So we'll have to find out what, I mean, Mashpee Commons is obviously in the town of Mashpee. We want to engage the planning authority and the, and the other boards in town in this process. But we're also the center for a number of the, of the areas and other towns adjacent to Mashpee. So it's a, it's kind of a good group of people with different needs. So we want to try and, in the planning process, find out what those needs are and then specifically try and find solutions to those needs. That, that's our goal anyway. And you can see how well we've done after, hopefully you'll participate in it and then hopefully you'll, you'll feel good that we've made some progress on, on some of these issues that you're bringing up.
Yeah, I'm interested in how the, you know, the rest of the community feels about this. You know, I'm one person. I can think of quite a few people that probably agree with me. But I, I'd be interested in the overall Mashpee communities.
Well, the, the wonderful thing would be if the people that you think are skeptical about this could get involved in this process, then we'd really understand what their concerns are and try and, and meet, meet the concerns.
How many residential units, I know it's still in design phase, but how many residential units?
Well, we have a, an existing permit under 40B, which is a statute in, in the, in the state that allows for, and that's, I think, 392 units of housing and on the, what we call the Jobes and the Whiting's Road neighborhood. We've done some planning that, that shows for an increase of about 30% beyond that. And that would be to provide smaller residential units, mother-in-law apartments, things like that, what you guys consider to be residential units. But we really don't know. I honestly want you to believe me that we want to hear from you what, what you want and then we'll design accordingly. One of the things that we have developed over the years is some ability to, we're, we're practitioners of this activity and, but we really want to see broadly what the community is looking for here and then try and manifest it. And we'll show you designs and pictures and, and everything and you'll say, yes, I like that and no, I don't like that. And then we'll move the design that direction. I know this is not the usual process, but given my conversations with many of you, it seems like the best process to, so that everybody feels like they have a stake. They, of course, they already have a stake being residents here and then they have a stake in what the future, the next phases of Mashpee Commons is. And that's the purpose of, of what we're proposing. Hopefully it will be.
The 342, that's under the current.
390.
386.
382, some three, something two.
That's under the present zoning and?
No, it's, it's, it's using something called Statute 40B. Tom can explain it to you, but.
I think they're pretty familiar with 40B.
Okay, yeah. It actually.
That's the comprehensive permit, the chapter 40B, where 25% of the units have to be deemed restricted affordable.
Right, right. But currently, and Tom will disagree with me on this because he always do, but it's, it's, that's the C1 zone, and the C1 zone, I think by right, doesn't allow for residential development unless you transfer units in from another place.
You.
So what we, we're saying, that big box I, the mention that I made was, we don't want to build big boxes. And I don't think you want big boxes. So what we want to do is just change the zoning so we can build the things that we feel the community wants. But that shouldn't be a problem for a town meeting if, if the, if the plan that's being presented and the zoning that's being presented is all bottoms up, it comes from the citizens. If that's the case, then we should all be on the same page. That's what we're hoping for. I don't want to fight, I'm too old to be fighting with anybody. I'm not trying to push anything down anybody's throat, I promise you that.
No, I, I mean, this week I was looking at, on the town's website, they have the, the study, the survey that, that you can go on and look at some of the statistics of some of the issues that the town, town folk have replied to. And one, one of those issues was, you know, the, the character of the town, a lot of, there was a high percentage, I forget the stats, but there was a high percentage that moved here particularly because it was a small-town feel. And it was also, it reflected that, that was one of the issues that the people had was the overall. people had, was the overall rapid pace of development in, in town. And, you know, I, I think that, that is a major issue, I know, for me personally.
Well, you know, David, we're often criticized for not going fast enough at Mashpee Commons, for not building enough. So, it just depends which side of the coin you stand on.
Can, can I ask, Tom, was that the survey that we did when we were working on-
Yeah, that's a survey that was done when we started working on the update to the comprehensive plan, and then when we lost our assistant planner, we had to stop.
Maybe you can dig that out for us?
No, it's actually on the town website.
Online?
Yeah, it's online. The results are. Yeah.
When, when, when was that last updated?
That was-
Seven, eight years ago?
Two thousand and ten maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Several years ago. David, if you have any other comment? Okay, I'll come back to you. Ron?
Nope, I'm gonna-
No?
By the way, Madam Chair, we are gonna have a website that's going live-
Great.
Soon, it's called Mashpee Commons slash future. And so, anybody can, if they have a comment or-
Dot com.
Here, I'll, I'll bring it up. And that's designed to receive community. I always remember the best idea when I leave, or in the shower the next morning, so please feel free to speak through that.
I think we're gonna be seeing a lot of each other in this. So, I'm gonna say a couple comments, and then we'll, we'll ask staff and our consulting engineer if they have any brief comments, and then we'll open it up to the public. So, you, you talked about additional meeting times. I have to say that I, I, I kind of cringed a little bit about that. A lot of us work full-time, and we already have other after-work commitments. So, I just want to offer that, you know, the planning board meets the first and third Wednesday of every month. We have that in our schedule already, and as you know, we dedicated hours and hours of time when we were talking about a development agreement between Mashpee Commons, the town, and the Cape Cod Commission. So, I'll just put that out there right now, that that is the most convenient time for this board is Wednesdays, just because we already have that off the slate. And we did meet earlier, we did have some pretty long meetings. They started at six, but we can talk a little bit more about that. But the planning board is your land use committee for the town, so I would encourage you to use that time. I have been to other meetings at the library, the Mashpee Public Library, which was a nice, very nice meeting space. Again, you're starting to, these would really need to be planned well in advance so that people could accommodate that, that extra to their schedule. The other thing is I've noticed is that if you want people to come to your meetings, you have to go to their meetings. So, there are some people and groups in town, including the tribe, that you might want to go and make this general presentation to them. I'm sure David could help you do that. Just to let everybody know, I'm sure that you, if you haven't contacted the Chamber of Commerce, that would be a good thing to do, and go visit them too. If you want a full community participation, I, I would recommend these larger groups, organized groups in town to go, to go visit them. Second is, I'm very happy to, to, to hear you say you want to hear from us, that's great. I'm glad that David remembered and saw on the, on our webpage that there's a survey, there was a survey that we did, and we use that to update our local comprehensive plan, which is long and boring and was tedious to go through.
Offended.
Tom loves this kind of stuff, you know, but, you know, Wednesday night is not, that's not the best time to do that. But, what I have to say, there's probably nothing that this board is gonna bring up that's not in our local comprehensive plan. And the reason why government makes policies and plans is because we do that in isolation of knowing who the project proponent is gonna be, so that all project proponents that come before us are treated fairly and equally. So, I'm gonna refer you, I know your staff has read it, but I really doubt this board would ask for anything in your master plan going out that's not already in our comprehensive plan. Again, I talked to Tony about the power of the development agreement. I think Dennis and I were the only board members that sat on the board at that time, I don't know if you had joined us by then, but there is a very powerful tool. If there's something that the town wants but doesn't really fall under zoning, under chapter forty A, you can go into a, you can discuss a development agreement, Cape Cod Commission is, as our regional planning commission gives us that tool. And of course, the things you're gonna hear, and these are the things that we always hear about permitting stuff, is you know, the density, the height of things, the environmental impact, water protection, groundwater protection, wastewater protection, traffic. I've done a lot of citing of developments, traffic ends up being the number one comment made, affordable opportunities for housing, and of course, the architectural and site design, which I think you guys have down pat. And yes, I have driven through the Commons regularly to see the progress of your new installations, and they are, they're, they're beautiful, it's a beautiful product. But I'm very encouraged that you're, you're starting this process to hear what the entire community of Mashpee wants to say.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'll turn to Tom and Charlie, if you want to say something right now or wait.
Just a quick logistical question. I think we'd be happy to come on Wednesday nights and meet here and talk here, but just out of formality, if we were, to make sure, we are gonna plan those events as far in advance as possible, and we want for this board to participate, and we want to make sure that's a public meeting and it's in held in the right spot so that you can participate. So, I think if, you know, we know it's a lot to ask to participate in these meetings, you know, it's, you know, sort of the worst thing to go to a church basement on a Thursday night and sit for a two-hour meeting, you know, but I, I think it's important that we do this in a way that's participatory for everyone, and, and I think going to the various other meetings and groups around town is important for us too, we've talked about that, so we're planning to do that as well. But we're hoping that we can make this a process that people are, you know, is engaging, they will actually want to participate in it.
Right.
So, I'm happy to come here as well, but I think we want to make sure that you could participate in those other events.
Right, so we have, so we have, like, for example, we have selectmen in the, in the room today, you know. We've, the, the committee, this, this board has met in other locations, and there's been questions about meeting quorum, you know, having a quorum. So, we have to be careful about meeting, you know, complying with open meeting law. This room can be changed in any, we do not have to use this. This is more like for a public hearing, this table. We can, you know, do charrettes in this room easily by installing foldable chair, you know, the tables and stuff like that. This, this, and it, you know, we don't have to have the formal videographing, you know, we want people to relax and shut out ideas out of the box. But of course, this building is accessible, it's public, and those are the checkboxes that you want to be able to say, yep, we met those. So, we could, but we can talk, I mean, it's just an invite, we can talk more about.
All right, all right.
Tom and Charlie? I'm sorry, I offended your local comprehensive plan.
Oh gee, no, that's, that's just fine. No, I just, all right, Buff, Buff admitted it, we disagree about something. We, we do have the mechanism in the zoning bylaw to do mixed-use development because we've gone through it before, and, you know, it's there. It's just that they want to do a different mechanism, and that's, that's what we've got to work out, is, you know, what's, what's right with doing it. I, I don't like them saying that we don't, they can't do it because they can under the zoning bylaw, it's just that they want to do it a different way, and that's what we're working on. Okay, so, because it just gets my back up a little bit, we can't do it. Yes, we can, but-
We're getting old.
You, you want to, you want to try to get it done a different way, and we're working on that, and I'm working with you, and I'm glad to do that. And Buff and I have said to each other, we're getting older, and we want to see this done with before we all croak, so, you know, let's get to it. And all, all I'm gonna say is, I'm, other than, other than that statement, I just want to say I'm, I'm here as a facilitator, you know, I mean, obviously, I've been here thirty-three years, I've been through all of the, all of the discussions with Mashpee Commons right from the start, and you think you've had a lot with the development agreement, you know, thirty-three years of, of the discussions is a long time.
I saved all those files, I have to dig them all out. I was just about to throw them out.
I'm one of those people that says, you know, where is it? I mean, it was like, you know, we had these plans thirty years ago, it's been moving really slow. But, you know, these are good people, and they want to do, do good things for the town. My, my focus, and I think our focus is not just the design though, it's the impact on the rest of the town, on the environment, on how it affects everybody else in town, because these are clearly, there'll be people from Mashpee that move into the new development, but there'll be people coming from outside that, to fill it, and obviously, increase in the population of the town, as David said. But there's still the rest of us and the rest of the town that have to go through the rotary and deal with the traffic, and as it gets more dense, it's like harder, harder and harder to imagine how we're gonna get from one place to another. We didn't have a traffic signal in town until nineteen ninety-four, until they graciously put one up on Market Street, so, you know, it's, it's, as David said, the town has really changed, and we just have to keep in mind that we're working for everybody, and I'm glad they want everybody involved in the process because, you know, they may not like everything that they hear from everybody, but, you know, that's, that's an open invitation, so, that's a good thing. As far as the meetings, you know, the planning board agendas have been fairly light, you know, because basically, other than you guys, it's like nobody else in town that's got land left to develop, so I can't see that there wouldn't be plenty of room on the board's agendas in the upcoming months to, to certainly put aside a lot of time for, for conversations and meetings relative to, to the planning and, and the design and, you know, a forum. It's actually, I, I think it's actually a good thing that these meetings are televised because, you know, everybody else out there can see what goes on, plus they get recorded, and people can go on the town website and see the discussion, so, you know, yeah, sure, if we get into a charrette and it's just, you know, a big babble of people, obviously you don't put that on TV, but formal presentations, it's good to get them, you know, down and recorded, and so everybody can access them when they have the time, that helps get the word out. And other than that, just, I, I was gonna say, ready to roll up my sleeves, but I think I started that about six or eight months ago, and I'm on vacation, but I'm back. Looking forward to working with these guys.
Charlie?
I'm a bit of an oddball here because I don't live in Mashpee, as probably most of you know. And my role over the years has been one of sort of reactionary. Somebody brings a set of plans to the planning board, and my job is to look at it and see whether or not it conforms to the zoning and to the subdivision rules and regulations, and then make comments about the project in that light. This is a little bit different in that I'm sort of hearing things that for, that will affect a town that I've been involved in for a number of years but don't live here. So, maybe I have a right to just speak up a little bit. Anyway, the bullet points that you first put up on the screen about the process, it seems to me, works whether or not you're working for a project under current zoning or whether you're looking for something that is entirely different. And I have to claim complete ignorance with respect to what form-based zoning really is. I don't know how many other people in the room may be familiar with it, I for one am not. And if it is something that is substantially different than what we've seen over the years in terms of zoning being a function of lot size and setbacks and landscaping and that sort of thing, it would seem to me that it would be very helpful to those that are ultimately gonna have to make the decision about this, if they knew a little bit about what form-based zoning really is. First of all, it's, may impact their thinking about how they want to proceed in terms of the bullets that you put up. And second, the second thing that sort of came to my mind was a little bit about what Tom was saying about how does it impact the rest of the community? If the town were to apply a form-based zoning to strictly Mashpee Commons, does that imply that the rest of the town is perhaps not as fortunate as Mashpee Commons in terms of the style of, of planning that it might decide to undertake? Does it put them at a disadvantage? Is it helpful to have the entire town zoned under a form-based criteria? I don't know that, and because of my ignorance, I asked the question. So, I guess I'll just leave it there.
That's a good point, thank you.
Mr. Ross, I think those are, I think you're right, we, we should talk about form-based zoning as a tool, and does that, and then talk about is that the right, right way to implement Mashpee Commons or, or larger areas in town, you know, for that matter. I think that reinforces both the impacts, you know, around, you know, growth and continued expansion Mashpee Commons have on the town and larger region. I think the process, I think we need to dig into that further in the process, because there are complex issues around traffic and how vehicles move around town currently, but then as we start to maybe add more streets and more intersections, you know, connect some of the trails and connect some of the bikeways, and, you know, the, the dynamics of how people get around might change. And by design, we could influence that to the benefit of, of everyone's goals. So, I think that's why we're really looking at the process as a way to facilitate this, this problem solving, which is really what it is, is, you know, do we all agree on this long-term vision, and how can we come up with good solutions for how to implement that? And I think the form-based zoning, in my firm as well as colleagues that we've seen use it effectively both in existing places and new projects, we just know as a best practice that that's, that's a tool that's out there. I think there's others that we can explore, and, and, so I think that's why, you know, we're really interested in how we, how we come together in the process around all of these issues.
If I could just interject, we're talking about form-based, it doesn't necessarily form-based zoning per se, there, it's form-based codes that can fit within the, the regular zoning, because we have to deal with the zoning statutes and, you know, the state rules in terms of how you do zoning. So, I mean, you can have a zoning bylaw that is a fairly traditional bylaw, but you can incorporate zoning, form-based codes into permit decisions or whatever. That's exactly what happened with the forty B project, where it operated under forty B, got the ZB comprehensive permit, but as part of that, there was a form-based code adopted for that development, the architectural code with a, a town architect to enforce and all the rest, so there's, there's all kinds of mechanisms to do it. It's not necessarily just going off or cutting off a piece of the town and doing a whole different kind of zoning. You can work form-based codes into your, your zoning or in your approvals, and, you know, that's, that's part of what we had to talk about, is how we juggle all that stuff once you got a, an idea. And it's almost, it's almost, the, a couple of things like, that can sort of go into parallel with the, with the, with the design stuff, because there's no reason we can't be still caught talking about the process while we're talking about the, the design too, you know, because we all know that there's a, a design that'll come out of this and ideas and desires that'll form a plan. But in my mind, because we've already been working on this for a while, I think it's fairly simple to develop a zoning bylaw or amendment that can incorporate all these ideas, you know, including the form-based code into, into, into our zoning bylaw without blowing up the whole thing. And the other thing is, can we get a copy of this presentation? I was trying to take notes all the way along, but, you know-
The machine right here, I'll email you a link tomorrow.
Yeah, if you could, well, yeah, if you could send me the, the link, because, and it's gonna be on TV, I guess, but I just have trouble. I wanted to write down all those one, two, three, four, fives, and all that stuff to make sure we keep track of that.
And I think, you know, the, the website we put up today, so we're gonna continue to refine that over the next couple of weeks, and we'd really like to keep all this information out there and transparent so everyone has access to it.
You didn't quite get to the, what is the exact address for that? Is it Mashpee Commons?
MashpeeCommons.com.
Dot com slash future?
Future.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I just acknowledge Christie Sen- Senatori from the Cape Cod Commission, who's been working with us on many of these?
Hi, Christie. Hi.
Thank you, Christie, for all your help.
Okay, so, I, I think the only mic we have is at the podium, right?
Unfortunately, I don't know why the other mic isn't up, but, oh.
Oh, is there it is?
Look at that.
Madam Chair, is that, I see that Russ has October tenth up there, is that, hopefully that's a Wednesday, and I don't know whether that's a date that's possible for-
Where's your camera?
That's a Tuesday, but, I, I think we can move that to a Wednesday.
Yeah. If that, that would work for you. The thought was is to bring some of- The thought was is to bring some of the, what would you call them? Experts in these various things, subject experts to present what they do, like form-based zoning could be one of them. And then, there could be a Q and A around that. So, we bring in a series of people when we realize, well, what kind of knowledge that you want to hear from others besides from just ourselves, how that's been used in other communities, that type of thing.
That's a great thing to have on a planning board evening, because we're already set up. We already have Mashpee TV televising. So, I think if you could, if you could work out a Wednesday date with Tom.
I think we could, let us get back to tomorrow even on if we can move that. But I think the idea would be to document.
So, I see a couple of people leaving, so I wanted to open it up to the public, because, you know, some people are, it's getting late, whatever. So, yeah, if you want to come up, just remember, yep, you want to come up?
I can shout.
No, the people at the, the people on.
Got to hear your TV.
They're on TV.
Yeah, and just state your name and then your comment or question.
Yvonne Courtney.
And you can bring those, right? Yep, there you go.
Okay, Yvonne Courtney. I've lived here for many years, some of you already know this, and I agree with David. It has changed quite a bit, and many of us moved from other places in the city to move to a small town. And we do see it changing and we are concerned about it. I have a couple of points I want to make, and one of my concerns is for young people in town. If you go to the Mashpee Commons, how many areas where young people can go? Is it spending money on clothes, and I do all of these things, eating out? But I think we should include in our plans some activities. Now, we all do a great job with people in the elementary schools, but I'm talking about the adolescents. And I think we should include them in any kind of plan.
Okay.
And that's the first point. The second point is traffic. I don't know how many of you work, how many of you commute, how many of you travel on Route 28, how many of you travel on 151. It is getting very, very heavy. Accidents on 151. Everything convenes at the rotary. So, we have to consider traffic. My last point is parking. I don't know how many of you go to the Mashpee Commons, but I know on occasions, if I can't find a parking spot, I go home. Other people are doing the same thing. This summer has been bad, but there are times in January and February, when I want to go to the movies, I have to park all the way at the other side. One of the major things, if you want this to work, you have to come up with a plan for parking, garage parking or a shuttle bus. People are not going to be riding bicycles. I'm one. There are some of us have reached a certain age, it is not advisable to ride bicycles anymore. I cannot walk from where I live to the rotary. So, I will have to drive and I'll have to find some place to park my car. So, that is the biggest problem. I mean, I love the Mashpee Commons, it's great to walk around, but I somehow have to get there. And there is inadequate parking now. So, any future plans will have to include some form of parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come right up, yep, sir.
Hi, I'm Doug Roberson. I live at Forty Ashumet Avenue. I know you're supposed to say that at a town meeting, so. About traffic, I think there's car traffic and there's foot traffic. And I know that there's been, there have been some things said about foot traffic, but they're mostly about walking within Mashpee Commons, as far as I've heard this evening. Right now, if you want to go to Stop and Shop from Mashpee Commons, to be specific, you've got to push that button on Route 151 and stop all the cars, you know, for who knows how far down the road. I don't need to elaborate, you understand what I mean. That's one person. If anybody else does that, you know, it's, I mean, it can become exponentially worse. Has anyone discussed the possibility of a pedestrian walkway, a bridge or a tunnel to get from one?
We used to, we talked about it, yeah.
Pardon?
I think we did. And where was it? Was it near Traupon though?
No, well, it was between the current and the East Dieple Street project, under 28.
So, it was, but not in the spot. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Well, and there's that spot, and then there are others, you know? If you wanted to go a little bit further and go over to Walgreens or Roche Brothers or something, obviously, that's a lot more involved because of the distance. But I think if that issue is put aside, it's not going to be helpful for the town of Mashpee. You're not going to encourage people who want to go to LL Bean and to Stop and Shop to do both things at once. I mean, and I think that's what we ought to be aiming for.
Can I, I want to really understand the issue. Is it the pedestrians experience crossing the street or is the issue of?
Well, it's both, and it's both. It's pedestrians, it's frightening to cross the street at 151 at that point.
I've done it.
Yeah, I've done it too.
No, this is one of those issues that I think we all know exists and it's something to talk about.
And it's dangerous. Just as a point of reference, in Sandwich in May, two senior ladies who were walking from housing development over there to the Stop and Shop Plaza that they have, were struck by a car and died. And I can see that happening here. I think we need to put this issue as a priority in designing future expansion of Mashpee Commons and enhancement of Mashpee Commons. I like Mashpee Commons a lot, you know? It's not perfect. I love the new stuff that's going up, but I think you need to really address that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Yep, come on up.
Hello, I'm Mary Lou Palumbo, the Executive Director of the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce. And yes, the Commons has reached out to the Chamber. And first of all, you know, I applaud Buff for his vision and also for opening it up to the community so that everyone can have input. I think it's so important, and we've heard some very valid concerns. You know, our theme this past year on the guidebook is connecting with Mashpee and working together. I think it's so important that, you know, we respect our land, we respect the environment, we respect, you know, the tribe that's been here forever, but also, we have some very important issues, as everyone knows. You know, we have a need to retain a young workforce. We have affordable housing issues. We have, you know, the environment, as we said, and wastewater and all of these things. And this is all very important. I think all of this has to be taken into consideration. I know that, I had a lady come in the other day and was looking for some jewelry, like from the tribe. I mean, how cool would it be maybe to have a store, you know, the tribe could have a store at the Commons where we could buy things that represents our culture and our history. But one of the things I have to say is just being, we have our office at the Commons and I see a lot of what goes on, but I think we have a company that is willing to work with the town and with, you know, all facets of the town. And not many people, you know, even give, you know, people that opportunity. So, I thank Buff and his team for wanting to work with the town, and I know we have a lot of things to address. It's important that we keep the charm of Mashpee. I mean, I know it's one of the things that really attracted me to this town. I've worked in many places and I have to say, one of the things that I enjoy most about working and being in Mashpee is that I can work very closely with the town, with the tribe, with the businesses. And I think together, if we think this out, like, one of the things I hear all the time, Mashpee has done a wonderful job planning this town. And I know there's things we probably could have done better, and I know there's probably things we could have done, we could have been more respectful, but the bottom line is that we all have to continue to work together and to consider each other and, you know, parking, safety, wastewater, all of this is very, very important. So, again, on behalf of the business community, we really would like to see this succeed for jobs, employment, all of the things that we need, housing, affordable housing. If we have affordable housing, hopefully, we can keep more people in Mashpee. So, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm glad that they've invited us to be part of this, and hopefully, we can continue to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Hello, I'm Pat Gamash, and I, a couple of years ago, moved to the Commons. I love it. It's such a great place to live. My question is a little bit selfish. With all of the plans for new, new things, are there, I live in one of the old buildings. Are there any plans to renovate the old buildings with things that are important to me, like appliances that are, what do you call it? Energy efficient and that kind of thing? So, just asking. And I do agree with everybody else, I think parking is one of the really difficult issues that hopefully, we can, we can address. Thanks.
Especially this weekend, the parking was horrible in the Commons. I left twice. I went up there to go to LL Bean's. I drove around forty-five minutes. I couldn't find a parking place.
It's because LL Bean was using all the.
Underground parking. Why didn't they make a underground parking and on top? I mean, that'd be the simplest way and you get double the parking.
I want a trolley. Okay, John. So, John, if people don't know, John Cotton, he's one of our selectmen.
So, John Cotton, 30 Nobbska Road. I lived in Mashpee about twenty years, so I'm also a Mashpee Selectman, and I love it in Mashpee. And I just wanted to say, I'm very encouraged and I appreciate the idea that you're talking about, it's a collaboration. So, just the idea that, you know, you're asking about what's the next step. And I think that's just such a great thing to see from a developer and just from, just a, it's like a teamwork. It's one, it's one town, we're working together to get to the right place. Nothing is perfect. I agree, parking, yeah. I mean, I deal with, I'm in Mashpee Commons every single day. I go through there or I stop there. And it's, you know, parking is, is parking, it's tough. But, you know, sooner or later, we can get there, we'll work it out. It may never be great, but, you know, a lot of the development has been, I have to say, well-done. I travel all around New England and people, when I say I live in Mashpee, like, isn't that Mashpee Commons? Yeah, that's my town. I'm proud of it. So, I just wanted to say that. I just, I think it's well-done and I just want to applaud you and your team for work, you know, looking to collaborate with the rest of us and to, you know, to be, become a better Mashpee. So, thank you very much.
John forgot to add, he used to be on the planning board too.
I know. I think he suffered through some of those meetings. Anybody else? Oh, hi. Hello.
My name is Mary Kay Fox. I'm President of the Friends of Mashpee Wildlife Refuge. I come before the Board in previous examples, but I just wanted to mention, just refresh everyone, that the Wildlife Refuge is the largest open space on the Upper Cape, second to the National Seashore. So, we are a big partner here in Mashpee and in Falmouth, and we kind of surround the Commons on three sides. So, we, I appreciate offering to have comment from the public and being a representative of the, of the eight partners that are managing this refuge, the Town of Mashpee being one of them and the Town of Falmouth being another one of the, two of the eight, I think they would be really interested in working with your plans going into the future and making some connection there and to answer question number two or number three or four, whatever the economic end of it, because it is such a big resource and, and given the fact that maybe in the future, as more great white sharks start showing up, the people will be looking for other recreational opportunities here on the Cape. So, but to Mary's point about time commitments, the eight partners represent state, federal, local groups. So, we meet usually on a quarterly basis or sometimes twice a year. And I think it would be, some would participate in some of the open meetings or in the shret, but shret. But I think that if we could communicate and have the team come and talk at one of the partners' meetings, that would be great. You'd get far more interaction and input from all the refuge partners as well. So, I'm time-constrained. That's all I'm going to say, and thank you for the opportunity to talk.
That's a great, that's a great, yeah. Anyone else? Okay, so, I'm going to end that there, and I think we're going to take a little break.
Sure.
All right?
Can I just throw one thing in, just the fact that the planning board, when you're dealing with them, has a bit more unique position than anybody else in town and that they end up being the regulatory authority and, you know, voting and zoning articles and all that stuff. So, that's why they have to be a little bit more careful in terms of their process and their, you know, when they get quorum together and the open meeting law and the rest. So, just something to keep in mind in terms of the meeting process.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass these out. Do you have any final comments or can we make a quick?
Buff? I think, just thank you for the time tonight. This is a big effort for everyone to understand, and we want to, we want to make sure we do a good job. So, keep an eye on the website and we'll be in contact with Tom about next steps and, you know, we'll shift that meeting date to start this off. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you, Buff.
Thank you, Buff.
While you're on that, just so you know, the Board meets the first and third Wednesdays of the month. The first Wednesday in October, they're going to be there doing their meeting on the zoning articles for town meetings, so I would suggest the third Wednesday, because that'll be wide open. Whatever that date is. I think you were in the week in between with the 10th there. Water, I mean, water.
Have you traveled through any of those wildfires out in the west?
Oh, yeah. Man, not through the fires, but, well, you know what? We went to, among other places, we went to British Columbia, right? Did Banff and Jasper and all those old national parks and all that. And we went up the Icefield Parkway, where the most incredible, beautiful mountains in the world. We could hardly see them because there were nine wildfires going in British Columbia and the sky was just totally hazed with smoke. We couldn't even hardly see the mountains. Then we went down to Missoula, Montana. Went to Glacier. Glacier was fine, got to see Glacier. Couldn't, we couldn't stop there because the parking lots are full and you can't even stop at the Mariah's Pass anymore because, yeah, everything was, all of national parks is so crowded, overloaded.
Quite a bit left, like halfway through the agenda. Somehow, I looked, I looked over the agenda, I'm trying to move too fast, I looked over the agenda, I didn't realize exactly what the Mashpee Commons presentation, I didn't pick up on it. I was doing some research this week. No, not as much as I wanted to.
No, not as much as I wanted to.
What else we have? Nothing else, right?
Couple of things on that. It looks pretty quick, though. Which is Cape Cod Commission mitigation funds.
They don't want to give us some money anyways.
Probably want to give us some money?
No. Years ago, when we started this conversation, one of the reasons we did it, because we wanted to get some money.
All I will say is that the sewer commission will find a way to spend the four hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, since we have zero budget right now, so we could use some, something to keep us moving along.
And there is, see, there is no, like, open space line, you see?
No, but that's because they, they actually have to put aside land for those projects. They can't just put up money. I mean, I don't know if they've done that in some places, but...
To transportation, though, there are alternatives to...
Well, I was thinking, could we...
Automobile travel, so that, you know, I, I didn't know if...
Could we use that money for the Quashnet Foot Bridge, if we come under budget with the CPA stuff?
I don't think so, because these are basically to take traffic off the road, you know, not really to, you know, facilitate walking in the woods. I don't think that will take any cars off the road. Mainly, they've been, they've been used for bike paths. I mean, that's what that money has been used for. And you can see that some of the other things are specific...
Even if we're going from the high school...
Specifically assigned to a specific project, that the industrial park entrance, the, the big chunk of the money there.
Yeah, because I, I was thinking, you could make the argument that, you know, where it's a car, access for high school-age kids to get to the Commons, that it would alternatively take traffic off of the road, Route 151, at least that short distance. So, that's kind of the way I saw it. If it was able to be used for that, along those lines.
Yeah. I think we can get money from CPC a lot easier or more appropriately, I think, you know, if you need more for that. The, we do have bike paths that end at nowhere, or at least, let's say, almost nowhere at the Children's Museum, and don't make it down in New Seabury and the Bike Shoulders down in South Cape Beach. I mean, that's a gap in the system right there that'd be great to, to fill in with some of this money in terms of bike paths. It was, it was stopped there because a previous TPW director didn't want to deal with the wetlands regulations, because there's a wetland just south of the, the Children's Museum, so nothing ever got done beyond there. But, you know, that's something to think about, if you want to propose uses for it.
Schedule hearing date for the October, for review of October town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles.
At the next meeting, right?
No. You have, you do, the way this is working out, and I have already talked to Mary about this, is that the selectmen are not voting on the warrant until next Monday, the eleventh. And because of the advertising requirements for the planning board's public hearing, the first, and actually the only, meeting you can do this at, if you're going to wait for the selectmen. And there is a zoning article that is potentially coming out from the selectmen relative to marijuana moratorium or possibly regulations. There's actually two versions, that one or the other, or both may be on the warrant. So, we don't even know how many zoning articles there'll be at this time. I've got a drafted zoning ad for you, for the articles that we do have, but I may have to add one or two based on what the selectmen do Monday night...
Okay.
On the marijuana thing. And so, that, the advertising for that first meeting in October actually has to go in the paper the fifteenth. So, we've got to get it, like, the day after the eleventh, you know. I've got to get it from the selectmen directly, so we know what to put in the ad, and, and...
So, definitely the planning board has to hold that hearing. The, the Board of Selectmen can't.
What hearing?
About the marijuana zoning.
No, any zoning article has to have a planning board public hearing. Yeah, selectmen, no, selectmen don't. I mean, you know, the weird thing is that, that there are basically three bodies that can submit zoning articles, the selectmen, the planning board, and the ZBA, or there's petition articles. There is one petition article on the warrant, or submitted for the warrant.
But we've seen that one.
And then, normally, the selectmen have always put the board's articles on the warrant. You know, you have six of them, I guess. And except for one time in the past, which really created some friction, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, where the selectmen declined to put a planning board article on the warrant. And that had sort of broke tradition in terms of the, you know, the board respecting the other board's right to do that. But they control the warrant, and, and the determination by town council at that time was that, you know, yes, you can submit the articles, but the selectmen control the warrant, so they can take it off if they want. So, we'll see what articles survive the, the, the selectmen process. Yeah, I haven't heard otherwise. I did get a call to the Finance Committee to discuss one of the articles, and clarified what it was all about for them. And so, so, so...
October fourth.
Technically, this is, I put it on the, the warrant just so everybody, I mean, on the agenda, so everybody would get a sort of notice of it.
So, you want to do October fourth at ten, seven-ten?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the way I wrote up the, the ad, based on our previous conversation. Basically, the chair can do this on its own, but this is just to get everybody involved.
Okay, so, October fourth at seven-ten. All right, any bills from Charlie?
Yes, we do. We have two. We got a Southport bill in the amount of four hundred and eighty-five dollars, and we've got a regular planning board bill for two meetings in August for a hundred and ninety dollars. Pass those bills at a hundred and ninety.
Southport wasn't four eighty.
Four eighty-five?
Not for Southport.
Really? What's going on here? This is...
That's the services for the month. Southport was one ninety.
Okay, all right. The reverse of that. Charlie charged you four hundred and eighty-five dollars for two meetings and something else. I don't know. Oh, this had to do with the, well, you read it. It had to do with the bridge. And then the hundred and ninety is Southport.
Make a motion to pay Charlie around a hundred and ninety dollars and four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
On favor?
Aye.
Whatever it's called.
All right, so, Housing Assistance Corporation and the Community Development Partnership is holding a Housing Institute. So, this is the flyer. It's, it's best, especially designed for members of town boards, committees, and town staff. And we used this model in Yarmouth once. It's, it's for people that are decision-makers in their town, whether you're on the Conservation Commission, or the Planning Board, or the Board of Appeals, or, you know, the Events Committee. Housing affects you. So, those are the dates. It's, it's one night a week for six weeks. And it's kind of like a big initiative, the kickoff, well, the announcement was made at One Cape that Mashpee Commons referenced, which is a two-day workshop, kind of like, event for the Cape Cod Commission every year. But if you can make it to the Housing Institute, David, if there's any other member of the tribe that's interested, I don't, you know, I don't know...
I'm actually the Housing liaison.
Right, so I don't, I, I don't, do you want to drop those off at the Housing Office? Because I know you have at least two staff members at the tribe that does housing.
Well, there's the whole department.
If you could give that to them, this, and it's supposed to go over the basics of housing and zoning, and why, why there's a need on the Cape, and, and also so that we can, the housing professionals can network, too. But it's for us as well, and this is perfect timing, because we're going to be talking a lot about housing. I'm probably going to be going to the ones in Howard, which are going to be Thursday nights. And the Upper Cape location has not been announced yet. So, that was my, that was the chairman's report. Is there any other report from that, the list of committees we have? Is there anybody that wants to make a report?
We had a historical commission, and we voted down the pickleball court.
No way!
Well, the, the meeting was...
I mean, just for that spot.
Wow, okay.
And it was one of the best meetings I ever went to.
You got to say no.
Historic commission meeting.
That meeting was a riot.
Any case, I mean, it was, it was not like a formal vote. I mean, Catherine Lauren wanted to get a sense to the commission. It was not an application before the board that they voted no on. It was, it was, "How do you feel about this?" And they all said, "Don't do it there."
I think I'm the only one that likes it. Boy, I'm shot down.
No.
I thought it was a great spot for the, remember the meeting we, I was at?
It's a real historical site, though.
Yeah, it's a hotel site.
I think the Environmental Oversight Committee is going to have to adopt that site.
Well, whatever.
It's not a historic site.
The hotel was there.
It is, oh, it's one of the most important sites.
Big thing, you know? And they want to do the garden, too. They want to try to get that back up and running.
And you know, the...
Maybe it could be like a butterfly garden, like a...
It already is.
Instead of a, well, more of it, instead of a community garden. Maybe, maybe that's what it has to be, but...
Mike wants to see if he can get it going again.
Yeah, because it's been said that nobody's been using this year. That's because the Conson was put in chart, and because of the uncertainty of the pickleball court, they did not allow any use this year. And it's never really got much advertising, because nobody's really taken charge of, you know, looking for customers, so...
Everybody can do it, Mike can.
Yeah, yeah. And there, at one point, the Mashpee Garden Club had wanted to do a community garden next to the fire station. They were shot down. I was surprised to find out at the meeting that the Mashpee Garden Club still exists, and I don't know why somebody couldn't talk to them about getting involved with the community garden. And the other is the, the Extension Service. I mean, the Extension Service is deeply involved in one of Marston's mills, the Children's Garden there that my daughters all went to, and, you know. If, if, if Mike can get all those people involved, I'm sure they can get that thing rolling. One of the things, one of the comments I made at the meeting was that I wouldn't want to garden there, because the fence is so low that anybody can get in and steal whatever I've got. And we had a counter, a counterargument from Jesse Baird that, well, no, you shouldn't put up a fence so that poor people that need the food can have the food. So, it's like, ah. So it's like, sort of torn, so, so I guess, I guess my idea would be to do half of it that way and half of it the other way.
And then that poor person kind of stole it, too, that.
You know what gets you?
Yeah.
The dare. I mean, there's like animals that come, trust me. There's no fence that will keep them out.
The tribe has a, has a, a couple of tribal members that actually grow quite an extensive crop over at the farm marsh up.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they do pretty good with it. There's a couple individuals that donate their time and, you know, bring the vegetables to the tribe's food pantry and stuff to help with, provide that sort of thing. So that's why I think you, you don't have a lot of participation from tribal members over there.
Okay.
But, I mean, you know, if the soil's that depleted of nutrients, then, you know, maybe trying to bring in something to.
Improve society.
I don't think, they're raised beds, so I think the soil was brought in anyways that's there. I don't think it's depleted soil per se.
But I didn't have much luck.
Yeah?
I had it for two, two or three years.
Yeah.
But anyways, Mike can figure that out.
Yeah.
He does environmental landscaping.
Yes.
Green environment.
That's his business, yeah.
Mike owns it now, tag your it.
Well, he, he wants it.
He wants it.
Yeah.
I gotta give him a call.
Yes.
All right, so, anything else from design review?
Yeah. We, Knockabout Bear Brewery, they were, you know, with the plan, same plan we had today. And the Mashpee Shell, they just want to add a, a regular diesel, side panels, there's nothing.
The Shell Station on 151?
Uh, no, 135 Main Street.
Oh, the Demolition Place, I see. Uh-huh. I got plenty of signs on that thing.
Well, no, well, according to him, I haven't been by there in a while, I haven't looked, but he said a while back, the town made him take all the signs off the building. So the only thing left was the Shell, yeah, a Shell sign that met the town, you know, the town agreed that's what they wanted. Now, he had to kind of replace it, because it was getting worn, and, so he had the new Shell sign, and then below that, he had the price of regular fuel and the price of diesel fuel. So the sign never changed in height or width, it was just a little bit at the bottom, and that was the only change to a sign. He didn't add anything.
I think it's the only diesel place in town, too.
Oh, is that?
I can't think of another place to sell diesel.
DPW's got diesel, but not open to the public, obviously.
Commercially, yeah.
But he, he said originally, the sign, the place was plastic.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was remembering, the windows all full of signs and everything, the lottery signs and all the rest, so that's all gone.
According to, now, I, I wasn't there, but according to the, the owner of the property and the guy that's leasing it, all the signs were removed. And they were removed a number of years ago. I think you might have said like 12, 15 years ago, or something.
No.
No.
Not that long ago. I go there every night.
You go there every night?
Buy my cigarettes, the only ones that sell tarantins.
Jesus, Dennis.
Why don't you call me up and tell me?
I go there every night.
I could've.
Gotta close that store, get you stuff smoked, if you want you around longer.
Every time I go to the doctor, they stop. Almost.
All right, so, Community Preservation Committee, no meeting. Environmental Oversight Committee?
No meeting.
No meeting. Historic District, we heard, great meeting. MMR, Military Civilian?
Yes.
Anything from the Cape Cod Commission?
Haven't had an RPP meeting in a while.
Well, they've posted the RPP, the draft RPP online for comment.
Really?
Yeah. It's like due September 21st or something like that, is my recollection. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I'm pretty sure I got.
Check that out.
Yeah, I know.
I haven't, I didn't post it on my, my computer right now.
Put that in the newspaper!
Unless I'm mistaken, and it's the 208 plan. I may be mistaken about that.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna follow up.
I just went before I came in.
I see that, Sam, I'm gonna be sending it to you.
The more I think about it, the more it's probably the wastewater plan.
Okay, so, anything on correspondence that we want to talk about?
Well, yeah, there is something, a couple of things I want to talk about. One has to do with the, one of the conditions of the special permit modification for South Cape Village, the home goods, was that, that they provide the board with a copy of a construction schedule and management plan.
Okay.
Before they could get an occupancy, I mean, a demolition permit. And I had a letter, and you got this package emailed to me last week by the attorney for the project. It was forwarded to Charlie, and Charlie had comments, which you have in your packet as well, on it. But his comments were not included in the package, because it was mailed before he even had his comments on it. And actually, before we even received it in the mail, which was Monday, the applicants went around the planning board to the town manager. The town manager allowed them to talk to the town council, who told the building inspector to issue the occupancy permit. And I was not involved in that chain, I only found about it from the building inspector afterwards that.
Is this the occupancy permit or the building?
The demolition permit.
Okay, demolition permit.
Yes. Because remember, the issue there was, you know, the neighbors and all the rest, and the protection you wanted for the neighbors. So that was a little disconcerting that that happened, because the weird thing about it is that the attorney, Liza Cox, who's a very good attorney, we get along great, Facebook friends and all that stuff, she was under great pressure from the developers to, to get this demolition permit done. But when you look at their demolition schedule, they actually aren't starting any demolition till tomorrow. So I had, I had told her that the board, being presented to the board, delivered to the board or whatever, means the board had a meeting, not, you know, an email to me.
Yeah.
Or whatever, but somehow they went through the Bena June and Town Council and got that occupancy permit.
Well, we'll never make that, we'll always make that crystal clear when we have future dealings.
Well, that was one where we had compromised on the language of that.
That's right, I remember that. Because we wanted to see the, we didn't want to approve it until.
And they didn't want to have to come to another meeting, so, you know.
Well, guess what? That'll never happen again.
Whatever. But.
All right, so where, so is there construction schedule in here?
Yes, it is. There is a chart, I believe, it's in here. Where is it?
Is it double-sided?
Wait a second. Oh, yeah, Charlie's got the chart. Let me look at the, where did you go? Oh, you know what? It's gotta be, it's gotta be, no, no, this page is missing from your package. I apologize for that, I don't understand, it's like the second page of the letter, the cover letter you don't have?
Yeah, it looks like something was double-sided and it came out.
Contact information, yeah. Well, any case, there is a schedule in the, in the letter that was received, that, like I said, all they're doing for yesterday and today was what's called makesafe, the electrical and the rest.
Can we get a copy?
Yes, you want to crank that up, yeah. And, I don't know, you want, you want the second half of the letter? What does it matter?
Well, I'd like to see that, and also, I'm concerned about Charlie's comments.
Well, you have a copy of Charlie's comments, it is emailed to them.
So, why don't you bring us through?
I had, I had three comments when I went through what they proposed to do for the fence. They showed a chain link fence, which is fine. They showed the location of the initial fence close to the building C, which is gonna remain. So I asked how close, or what's the minimum distance that you're gonna have between the fence and that building for pedestrian access, especially for emergency purposes. Apparently, the deputy fire chief had the same concern. So it's gonna be a, I think it was a minimum of, I forget what it was now, minimum of five feet, something like that. But then on the fence itself, they were gonna put a, a blanket material in the fence, or put it on the fence for visual impact.
Right.
And so my question was, based on the kind of concrete blocks they're gonna use to support the fence, is how's this thing gonna stand up?
Mm-hmm.
Got a good windstorm. Those blocks, Dennis, were about this big by this big with a hole in the middle, the pipe goes in.
Oh, I know.
And they're not anchored.
No, they blow right over.
They blow right over.
And this is the mesh they're gonna use?
That's the fabric they're gonna use, but they said that they would cut holes in it so that some of it would flap here and there, but they would also zigzag the fence and then put some tiebacks on the fence by putting additional pieces that perpendicular to it to help support it. So, there's not much more you can say about that, I guess, just gonna have to see if it works.
So they responded to that?
They did, and I don't know whether you've got in your package is this little picture here? Shows the location of the fences. It's showing the initial fence here, close to this building C, which is gonna remain, and right down here in the corner is where the restaurant is that everybody was concerned about.
Which is just closed, by the way.
It's closed, it's all right.
I want to be sure that there was enough room to get by the fence in the face of the building if emergency access was needed. They're gonna have to pull out a couple of planters to do that, but they agreed to do it. So this yellow line is where the first fence is gonna go. The second fence is this zigzag pattern here, which would go in after, I believe, after the demolition is done, and that's gonna have pieces of fence that would go at right angles to it to help hold it up. That's what they were saying.
Okay.
But that comment about the fencing, the material for visual impact, and the location of the fence was not included in the final document that came to you.
And that's because what came to you was the document that was the document before Charlie saw it.
Yeah, when it was given to me to review, I looked at it and I said, "It doesn't include the comments," and that's why you have an email from me dated September 1st.
Yeah. If you look down at the bottom of the page, too, you can see the original from Liza Cox basically saying, you know, "I'm forwarding free files, electronic copy of the correspondence of the planning board submitting information regarding condition three, blah, blah, blah." The original, the correspondence, also being mailed to Tom. And Michael, you are receiving a hard copy as well, that was received Monday. With this submitted, we believe that we have fully satisfied the requirements of special permit modification associated with releasing the demolition permit, including. Michael asked Friday to confirm all our other requirements, so. The email that the letter was sent in to me, that they claimed was, met the requirement, and that's what they got through town council, so.
There actually was an email that came to me, and I guess Tom got it, too.
Yeah, there was another one with the discussion about the holes and all that, yeah.
That outlined exactly what they were going to do, and which they could very well have incorporated into the letter, and they didn't do it.
Yeah, but again, it was after the letter was already sent. It was, it was emailed to me August 31st, and it was mailed September 1st, Friday, and your, your, your review is September 1st, so it was already in the mail before you commented on it.
I know, but there were, there was an email that came from them prior to September 1st.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I know about the email, yeah.
If they had incorporated that into the letter, they would have taken care of it.
Yeah, they didn't have time to, the lawyers had already sent, sent it and said they were done with it.
So.
Any case, I mean, that's not a big deal.
Is there documentation that, about stabilizing the temporary fence in the file, that they've agreed?
No, there's, no, there's nothing there, because the letter doesn't reference it at all.
Okay.
Well, the email does. The, the perpendicular fences, right, the email they sent to you?
Yeah, they sent to me.
The one about the holes and all.
There's nothing in Nutter's letter that says that, there's no reference to it.
No, no, there isn't.
No reference to the changes that were suggested and commented on it that they agreed to do.
But the bottom line is that the board did not define what.
So that's an email to you, that they agreed to do it?
I first, I first got a, an email that included basically all this stuff, including the timeline.
Okay.
For construction and so forth, and I asked him a question about paving, if they were gonna pave it all during this, in the fall.
Right.
And they replied back, said, "Yes, we probably would put the binder down." And then I asked them at the same time the question about the fencing, and that's when they came back with the comment about the, the type of support and putting this fabric up, and then cutting holes in the fabric to allow the wind to blow through it. That's what I got as a result of my question.
Okay.
But none of that got him, got, this got included, but there's no comments in the letter with respect to the other things I had mentioned.
So why don't you, why don't you send me the last correspondence from them, that whole email thread?
Okay.
And I'll send it to Liza and ask her to put it in a formal letter for our file.
Okay.
Well, they feel they've done what they need to do, and frankly, the, there was no, there was no specification in the.
That's okay, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Liza to put it in a letter that's signed, so we have, it's nice and neat, it's not just emails going back and forth. But is there anything else they're supposed to submit to the board?
No.
Okay.
Not at this point, no.
Because I was gonna say, we'd, we want that, we interpret that as coming to the board, so.
No, they, I did get a telephone call, and they were asking me what I needed for information as far as their schedule was concerned. It says, "As far as the building is concerned, I'm not concerned, because it's not part of my job to inspect the building instruction, that's building inspectors' purview. But as far as the site work is concerned, that's my concern, so I'd like to see the timeline on that," and that is included on that schedule that you have.
Okay.
So I was satisfied with that.
Yeah, I, is that okay with everybody? I'll have him send me the last correspondence, and I'll ask Liza to put it in a formal letter.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of threads, when you say threads, you've got one thread there, there's a different thread between Charlie and the engineers.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pull mine up and send it to you.
Yeah, I, I'm more comfortable. All right, anything else?
Make a motion.
Just on the correspondence continuing there, you've got.
Jim, what's it go?
The, the discharge reports from South Cape Village, speaking of them again. I guess you noticed during the summer, you got a report for June that had nitrogen at 41 milligrams per liter, which is, you know, blown in your way in terms of the numbers. And then July, it was down to 10.7. And in response to those numbers, I called the operator of the plant, and the guy that does the, the testing and all that stuff. And apparently what happened was that the, the filters were clogged, and they were basically cleaning the filters at the time they did the sample that got the 41 nitrogen. And they, you saw that the, officially in July, they were down to 10.7. I asked him, because I don't usually get these by the, in time for your meeting, to, to get me the August numbers, and what he sent me was the lab reports for August, and it was down to 5.9. So I, I think that that's the explanation for the big number there, which I believe you guys were concerned about.
It's kind of silly.
And then the other thing he told me was that Weston and Sampson has been hired to look at changing the plant, possibly doubling the, the number of amphidrome streams there, so.
Sorry, doubling the number of what?
Well, it's an amphidrome plant, and they have a certain number of tanks where the activity goes on, and, and they're looking at possibly increasing the number, 'cause you got one whitewater doing the sampling and the managing of the plant, but there's separate engineering from Weston and Sampson has been brought in to look at the plant itself and possibly redesigning or rebuilding it, so. That doesn't have a timeline on it, but I just thought I'd let you know that it's happening, and so they are taking the situation seriously. And that's all I got.
Anything else? Dennis, you wanna?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome job, everybody.
That was the 208 plan that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The more I thought about it, the more I realized that was it.
Then they did the traffic study for the, over there on 28, too?